... rise for the invocation and Pastor Fred Walters, would you please come forward from the New Life Church?
I figure it's because of me that you have no video. Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Heavenly Father, Lord, we just thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight to represent you in this meeting. Father, we just ask you to continue to give blessings to our great nation, to all its leaders, whether it be national government, for state and local government. Father, we ask that you watch over and bless our armed forces, those people, men and women serving in the armed forces, the veterans that have already served, keeping us safe and making us the great country we are. Father, we ask that you bless the first responders, that you take care of them, Father, that they make lots of sacrifices and we just take them for granted. But Father, most of all, we take you for granted. So we ask you tonight to just bless this meeting, bless everything we say and do, give us wisdom and discernment as we move forward in this new year to make Bonita Springs the greatest city in Florida. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Councilman Slackta, could you please lead us in the bunch of allegiance?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh?
Here.
Councilwoman Martin?
Here.
Councilman Slackta?
Here.
Mayor Nelson?
Here.
Councilman Simmons?
Present.
Councilman Longheart?
Here.
All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor.
All right, and we will go to public comment on agenda items. Anyone wishing to speak at this time, please come forward on any agenda item only, please. Hello.
I'm Carolyn Gallagher of Cedar Creek, and I wanted to speak on number 7B about the water monitoring. Excuse me. When the Water Task Force discussed this effort, it was for groundwater monitoring for the purpose of learning how the groundwater flows and stands throughout the DRGR during the wet and dry seasons. This is the part of the water equation that the city doesn't have because the city already has other well monitoring data pertaining to the water wells in the DRGR and elsewhere. Now, I think maybe we should take a closer look at why the general description statement, this is the RFP, describes deep wells. I'm curious about this. When one of our experts, am I allowed to say the name?
Sure.
Kevin Irwin, talked about this effort, both in the Water Task Force and in the city, he said that his staff or another contractor could teach volunteers to set the measurement gauges and to periodically read them. With a contractor's help, there would probably be around 50 gauges, give or take, and the cost around $50,000, give or take, and about $30,000 more if the contractor did it. So my question is, why are deep wells needed and how much is this adding to the cost? Because there was no cost that I could see in the document. Also, I have a diagram of groundwater monitoring, of a groundwater monitoring well, if you're interested, and it only goes to the high-low groundwater levels. That would be the water table, which wouldn't be very deep here, maybe 10 to 12 feet, and it doesn't seem like it would be a difficult thing to do. So, still wondering about those deep wells. So I believe in getting the job done that we talked about, no more, just the job, at the most reasonable price. And I'd also like to see the information that the winners proposed for their bid, in their bid. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Deborah McLean, publisher of The Banana Peel. I look forward to the next election. I cherish it. I am here to speak about 7B, which is the monitoring. I am disturbed to see that Johnson Engineering was submitted a proposal when in fact they were caught lying about retrieving data from monitors that did not exist. And I find it hard that you have such short memories, that Baraco works for our community development on projects and that Johnson Engineering is still employed by the city on other projects. You were told in black and white with documentation from multiple governmental agencies by reports prepared by the infamous A-Team that these things, these companies were lying to you. And I have a hard time respecting your judgment with regard to Johnson Engineering and Baraco.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Rick Steinmeier, referring to 7E, the landscaping and facade reimbursement from the city. I got a lot of questions. I probably should have done a lot more research on this. You're paying 80% of the cost of doing these facade and 80% of the cost of doing the landscaping in the old 41 district. Question I have is, who is making these estimates as to, here he comes up with $12,500, so 80% of that happens to be about $10,000, and the other comes out to $5,000, which is the maximum. Who, how many bids have been taken? Are the bids inflated possibly? I don't know. I can't trust anybody anymore. And who gets paid? When does a painter get paid? Does he get paid and then the owner get reimbursed from the city? Or does the painter have to wait till the city approves the project? How does it work? I hate to be so specific, but I got a friend that's bid on this and he doesn't know how he's going to get paid or when he's going to get paid. So I'll see if I can find out something for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Cindy Burgess from the Chamber of Commerce. I'm here just to speak briefly about the consent agenda item for the special event permit for the Community Expo on March 10th at the Promenade. It'll be the third year we're going back. Last year we had over 75 businesses, about 1,500 people. It's a free community event. We absolutely look forward to having continued partnership with the city, and I'll be here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Fred Forbes, for the record. First of all, I'm glad to see that we're recognizing the kids for their good writing and all that. I would like to propose that once the city approves the award of the water monitoring contract, that the successful bidder would come in and maybe make a presentation of what they are going to do, because it appears that what went out on the RFP is different, primarily these deeper wells, and there may be a good reason for doing that. It's not what was really recommended by the expert at the time, but there may be another good reason for doing it. But I think if we'd have a little presentation on what the scope is before the work starts would be good for City Council and those of the public that are interested, some of the task force members. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council, fellow Benetians, Jesse Purdon, District 2, for the record. I would like to talk about approving special event permits, 7A, which is Southwest Florida Marine Industry Association Boat Show, the Lover's Key Nautical Flea Market and Boat Show, 7D, and once again, 7F, the Chamber Business Expo. All three of them are great events for Bonita. Quite frankly, they're taxpayers, so they should be permitted to use the land. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
As always, thank you for your service and Happy New Year also.
Hey, thank you. Anyone else this time on any agenda item, please come forward.
John West, 35 years in Bonita Springs. I wouldn't be here if it weren't for the fact that a year ago at a meeting here you were discussing the Water Task Force work, and you had before you a rush of engineers, prominent engineers, who do work in the area, who were pains to tell you not to worry about any more studies. We've got enough data. It's time for you to get on with it. Well, I'm sorry to say that they are wrong. We don't have enough data, and Kevin Irwin was right in saying that the data that there is is insufficient. Last year, I did a lot of work for the Task Force project. It wasn't asked of me, but I thought I would do some research because there was a letter written by Johnson Engineering in March of that year in which he indicated that, I will read you what he said. This was in answer to Dave Gallagher, who's here in the audience, and one of the Task Force members. He was asked, "How many years can we continue to use water from the Lower Tamiame Aquifer?" And the answer was as follows. "The usage from the Lower Tamiame Aquifer at current rates could continue indefinitely." Hydrographs from USGS Lower Tamiame Aquifer Monitor Wells L-5747, which is on Stillwell Parkway, at least it was on Stillwell Parkway until recently, when it was removed. And the other one, L-2194, which is on Fagan Lane east of Bonita Grande, located to the northwest and southeast of Bonita, show either steady or rising trends in water levels over the past 10 to 15 years. Chloride concentrations, which measure saltwater intrusion, also show no discernible long-term
Yeah. By the way, Laura had money on that, that I would get that simple name wrong. She was right.
trends, which suggests current usage could continue for the foreseeable future.
Deputy Clark, come on up. And your entourage.
And my entourage, yes.
Well, right now, I'd like everybody to give these fine deputies a hand, please.
Well, that's a pretty heavy statement to make, and I produced this paper, 12 pages,
Have a seat.
So like the mayor said, I'm Deputy Clark. I've had the pleasure this year of being in charge of the Sheriff's Office, Bonita Springs
and gave it to the Water Task Force in June of last year.
Community Policing Unit Holiday Essay Contest.
Do you mind if I continue?
Yeah.
What we do every year is we sponsor two schools, grades kindergarten through fifth, and we
I'll give you a couple minutes. If you want to go ahead and wrap it up.
I can't wrap it up that quick.
give them an essay topic to participate in.
Well, I'll try and do it as quick as possible.
Hold on there. There's two, you have two more opportunities, which will be five minutes apiece or four Close to the mic, just close to the mic. minutes apiece, so you'll have other opportunities later on in the meeting if you'd like to There you go. continue.
Well, in that case, I'll wait.
We give them a holiday essay contest, and this year the essay question was, "What
Okay.
Okay.
That would be good.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much, John. Anyone else like to speak to any agenda item, please come forward.
does doing the right thing mean to you?" So we give this essay contest to both schools of Bonita Spring Creek Elementary and Bonita
Seeing none, we'll go ahead and continue on with proclamations and presentations.
Springs Elementary, and we have the kids just explain to us what they think doing
And right now, we have a presentation of certificates for students from Bonita Springs
the right thing means to them and giving us an example of when they did.
Elementary, and I think we, our presenter is going to be someone from the Lee County
We received over 1,200 essays, and of those 1,200 essays, we picked 12 first-place winners.
Sheriff's Department. Deputy Clark?
Clark.
Clark?
And those winners, on December 21st, got to go with us to Target Coconut Point for a $200 shopping spree. And so we just want to, number one, thank the city of Bonita Springs for allowing us to use the city and the businesses to raise this money so that we can do these for these children, and just giving us the support that we need. So with that, we are lucky enough to have five of our winners with us tonight, and we would like to recognize them for their, you know, great essay and doing the right thing, which is great to see in such young people. So first, I'd like to call up Josue Antonio from Bonita Springs Elementary. Come on up, buddy. Patrona Miguel Sebastian, come on up. Carla Herrera, Carla. Annabelle Hurtado, come on up. And last but certainly not least, Arsenio Altazar, come on up, buddy. Parents, if you want to get pictures of them, come on up and snap away. All right, that's for you, Arsenio.
I'm going to have the council stand up with them.
Absolutely, please, please.
Show that up, show that stuff up. Come on, there you go. Oh! You're good, you're good, buddy, all right. All right, right here, buddy. Lieutenant Presslucia did not have to read all of them himself. We helped.
All right, I'm going to have everyone look right here. One, two, three. One, two, three. Perfect.
All right, good job, guys. Make sure to participate next year. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask Mary Musto and you have other members of the DAR would like to come forward? Come on forward. Do you have proclamation here? Whereas although American involvement in the conflict of Vietnam spans several decades and the ground offensive officially began in March of 1965, and whereas in April 1975, a nation ended military involvement in the Republic of South Vietnam, thus ending what was then the longest war in the country's history, and whereas through long and controversial in nature, this war in many ways defined an entire generation of Americans and numerous brave men and women who served during the conflict, whereas over 58,000 men and women gave their lives during this difficult and painful period, and whereas citizens of our city of Bonita Springs, Florida must never forget the pain and suffering that lingers today for the men and women who fight with honor and distinction, and whereas throughout the 50th anniversary commemoration, let us show our Vietnam veterans and their families and all of the men and women who served their country the fullest respect and support. Now therefore, I, Ben Nelson Jr., Mayor of the City of Bonita Springs, do hereby proclaim January 6, 2016, through December 31, 2017, as the commemoration of the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War. Thank you, ladies, so much for doing this. Thank you. Everybody give them a hand.
Are you going to stand over there, Bill, and smile?
Thank you very much, Mayor Nelson and City of Bonita Springs. The Department of Defense has asked various organizations to partner with them to honor as many Vietnam veterans as possible. And DAR, and specifically our Barefoot Beach chapter, agreed to partner, and there is a commitment for three years, 2015 through 2017, to host at least two events to honor these veterans each year. That is why we're here today. This is our first event of this year. If there are any Vietnam veterans, would you please stand? Are there any, any families of Vietnam veterans here? Thank you very much. We have some commemorative commemoration pins and stickers that will give to some of you on the way out. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Please give the DAR a hand again. Thank you. Council, we have items A through F. Could you carefully take a look at them? Sure there's nothing there that you would like to have pulled or if you have any questions on? And tell me what your pleasure is. Would you like to approve it?
I guess B.
You want to pull item B? Council, is there anything else? Would you?
I approve the rest.
Motion to approve the remainder by Councilman Simmons. Send this to second. Any other? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slackta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Well, I mainly pulled it, there was a question during the first public comment about deep wells that were part of the original thing.
Would you like me to answer?
Sure.
Matt Feeney, for the record, Public Works Director. We wrote that scope with a broad range. We definitely used the body of work that came out of the Water Task Force as the principal guiding directive. We did include deep wells so that there was no confusion between 20-foot deep well or a well to the first aquifer, the superficial aquifer, versus the groundwater, which is, as was mentioned earlier, about 12-foot deep. So we wanted to write that flexibility in, but really what we did was wrote a lot of flexibility into the scope. The consultant by the scope has to come back to City Council with their proposed plan for your review and adoption, and then as they go out to implement it, they have to come back and show you what they were actually able to build from that plan for guidance. So we just wrote that in there so that should they recommend that there should be a deep well here or there, so that they could get a feeling as to where the superficial aquifer levels were, as well as the groundwater and the surface water, that they had that flexibility and understood that would be required of them should they need it.
Okay, will that all come back before us?
Yes, sir. That piece is absolutely written into that scope so that they come back to you for consideration and approval before they go forward with any work.
Okay. Council, any other questions? Okay, Mike, you have anything?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is a second, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Slackta?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slackta?
Aye.
Okay, Audrey, item B.
A zoning ordinance of the City of Bonita Springs, Florida considering a request by Preserve Equity LLC for a project known as Preserve at Oak Creek to rezone a mixed-use plan development, MPD, and residential plan development, RPD, to a mixed-use plan development, MPD, to allow for up to 273 dwelling units, 220 standard density dwelling units, and 53 bonus density dwelling units, and 12,000 square feet of commercial uses on land located at 10500, 10550, 10580, 10600, 10650, and 10650. aquifer levels were, as well as the groundwater and the surface water, that they had that flexibility and understood that would be required of them should they need it.
Okay, will that all come back before us?
Yes, sir. That piece is absolutely written into that scope so that they come back to you for consideration and approval before they go forward with any work.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions? Okay, Mike, do you have anything?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
And just like that, we're back to public comment again. I told you there, John. I told you you'd get another chance at this. Anyone wishing to speak this time, please come forward.
I'll try and make it short. We were on the subject of the difference in water levels as indicated by Johnson Engineering. And my own meager presentation where I showed that there had been a reduction in water levels, and this reduction was not based on simple from the beginning to the end kind of arithmetic. It was based on the fact that over the last 30 years, every 10-year cycle has shown a reduction in water levels. And, you know, in the Baraco Report, there were two instances there. One by McLean in his report, which indicated also that there had been reduction in aquifer levels. And Mike Shi, who said that the groundwater levels in the aquifer were showing reductions amounting to about .2 feet a year. That .2 feet a year translates into 7 feet over 30 years. And that was the figure that was mentioned in a recent article in the news press where they quote a figure of 7 feet mentioned by South Florida Water Management District. So, the question of water monitoring is vital. And I don't know how they are going to do the groundwater part of it, because there are no wells, monitoring wells, that penetrate the aquifer in the DRGR. The nearest one is L-2194 on Fagan, and unless there's been one suddenly built somewhere else, that's all there is. And that is a long way from the DRGR. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Deborah McLean, publisher of The Banana Peel. There are some people that are very bright that I'm almost blinded by their light. One is Fred Forbes, number two is John West, and the other one is Wayne Daltry. And they never forget anything. I am humbled when they come before me or write to me and remember everything and have to tweak me. So, I would like to remind you that there were a suggestion of no less than 50 monitoring units to be put in and monitored by local teams that Kevin Irwin was happy to set up. No less than 50, spread all over the place. And that is important. And when I talk to these three men, they don't know this, but sometimes I put my door-stay innocent face on, and what I'm really thinking is, "What's the gist, physicist? Hurry up, tell me the answer." The answer is, the aquifer has dropped 7 feet. They are building like crazy north of us. And if the water comes from Georgia, or maybe Alabama, we're not going to have any water because we're at the end. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward. Seeing none, we will continue. And we have first reading of the following ordinances. Audrey, and there's these first two, there is no public comment on these.
That is correct. The first is a zoning ordinance of the City of Benita Springs, Florida, considering a request by SLF 4-FL Benita Ellico LLC for the Benita Exchange Mixed Use Plan Development MPD project, repealing City of Benita Springs zoning ordinance number 07-12 on land located at 28090, 28110, 28170, 28190, 28230, 28231, 28191, 28111, 28131, and 28171, Quails Nest Lane, and also 12025 Benita Beach Road, Benita Springs, Florida, 34135, on 26.4 more or less acres, providing for an effective date. This is a first reading of the ordinance. The ordinance will be heard at a public hearing on January 20th, 2016, beginning at 9:00 a.m. by council.
Thank you very much. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Would you like to move this to second reading?
So moved.
We have motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have motion and a second, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Okay, Audrey, item B.
A zoning ordinance of the City of Benita Springs, Florida, considering a request by Preserve Equity LLC for a project known as Preserve at Oak Creek, to rezone a mixed-use plan development MPD and residential plan development, RPD, to a mixed-use plan development MPD, to allow for up to 273 dwelling units, 220 standard density dwelling units, and 53 bonus density dwelling units, and 12,000 square feet of commercial uses on land located at 10500, 10550, 10580, 10600, 10650, and 10750, Dean Street, Benita Springs, Florida, on 17.46 more or less acres, providing for an effective date. This is a first reading of the ordinance. The ordinance will be heard at the January 20th, 2016 city council meeting, beginning at 9:00 a.m.
Okay, counsel, what would you like to do?
Move to second.
Motion to move to second.
Second.
And there's a second to that. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
And, see, Audrey, there is item 10 now. This is a first reading, public hearing of the following ordinance, and there is public comment on this. There will be a public hearing.
This is correct. This is an amendment to the Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter 4 zoning, creating site-specific bonus density regulations for the old US 41 redevelopment overlay district, expanding subdivision 3 of District 12 of the supplementary regulations to allow bonus density for reasons other than affordable housing, amending Sections 4-868, 4-870, and Sections 4-1310 through 4-1319, creating Section 4-1320, regulations and processes for bonus densities within the old US 41 redevelopment overlay district, option 3, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, squibber's errors, inclusion in code, and effective date. This is a first reading of an ordinance. It is a land development code ordinance, so a public hearing is taken at this time. I do not have the affidavit of publication, but I am assured it's on file with the city clerk, and I will check it and verify it.
Thank you very much.
I'm Alexis Crespo, will present the hearing.
Hi.
Hi, good evening. Happy New Year.
Whee!
As Audrey indicated, this is first reading of amendments to the old 41 redevelopment overlay district. And unlike some of the amendments we brought forward over the past couple of years, this is fairly succinct and streamlined. It's really relating to two specific areas relating to downtown. The first area are some minor revisions to the parking regulations for downtown, and then we're also looking to implement bonus density provisions specific to the downtown area as well. So, just to recap, in terms of parking in old 41 redevelopment district, there are currently some provisions in your code to allow for reduced and alternative parking standards, since it is a downtown mixed-use development concept. So, there are provisions to allow developers to provide parking off-site instead of on their site, where it meets certain criteria. There's also current provisions to allow developers to provide a payment instead of providing the parking onsite. Their payment is tied specifically to the cost of surface parking in your current code. There's also a reduction for mixed-use projects using a matrix that's in your land development code. And there's also reductions for providing dock spaces for boats in lieu of providing parking spaces. So, one dock is equivalent to two parking spaces, and you could get reductions for providing that type of infrastructure on the site. So, that's what you have today. We're making just a couple, or proposing to make a couple of modifications. First, to clarify your payment in lieu program, to also provide a valet program option, is that something we're hearing some interest from the development community that they would like to do, certainly for some residential and commercial projects, to allow for reduced parking onsite, but still facilitate people arriving by vehicle. And we're also looking to review your parking requirement for standalone residential developments, as you're currently only required to provide one parking space per dwelling unit for all residential units in downtown. And staff is seeing, as some of the development and redevelopment proposals are coming forward, that that may be insufficient where developers are not providing mixed-use development and doing a standalone apartment or condominium-type use. So, just getting into the specifics, I'm actually off on my page numbering. I utilize the permission-to-advertise version. So, the strike-through underline you see there is on page 3 of the ordinance. And we're proposing, just to clarify, in the payment in lieu section, it's currently very limiting to the city that the payment that the city applies to developers that don't want to provide parking onsite and want to pay the city to provide that parking elsewhere, would only be based upon the cost of surface parking. And looking longer term, there may be other ways of providing for parking in structures and non-service parking alternatives that may need to be identified down the road. And so, we were looking to add some flexibility into this section of the code to address that future need that may occur as the surface parking areas get consumed through the redevelopment We also added the proposed strike-through language to allow for a valet program. You cannot offset all your parking requirements by providing valet, but we were looking, and we're recommending that up to 50% of parking requirements may be satisfied if a valet program is provided and implemented in accordance with some very stringent administrative code requirements. So, the city would need to know how that's functioning, that it's available all hours of the day, that the business is open, that it's a bona fide parking program that's meeting the needs of patrons as well as residents. And then the last item I'll note, that we're proposing to change for parking in downtown, we would propose that you maintain the one-space-per-residential-unit requirement where that unit is truly part of a mixed-use development project. However, if someone's doing a standalone condominium or apartment without any type of commercial uses, that someone could walk to work or walk to get their daily goods and services, that they provide a higher parking rate of 1.5 spaces per unit. That would accommodate guest parking and situations where you have two and three-bedroom units, where usually more than one person are living there, and potentially more than one car is associated with the unit. There is concern that having a blanket one space per unit could result in some parking space deficiencies for some standalone residential projects. If there's no questions on the parking provisions, I'll move into the bonus density segment of the presentation. Your comprehensive plan has some very high-level guidance regarding additional options for bonus density within the downtown area. You can still implement affordable housing, or do a payment in lieu to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, but the comp plan says that within downtown, we want to provide a third option for achieving bonus density, and that's providing access to the river or providing unique design solutions, or contributing infrastructure that's needed in the downtown area. However, currently, there is no regulation or guiding language in your code to really allow a clear implementation of this policy. So, again, we've done this in several other amendments, but we're looking at a menu approach. We're not proposing one or two different improvements, but giving them a list of eligible improvements to achieve the bonus densities. And we're also having a high level of coordination with the city and city manager's office to ensure that the specific sites are providing the correct eligible improvements to really enhance the downtown area and meet the intent of what we're seeking to do through the redevelopment. One thing to note out that we made very clear in this is that if you're providing code-required plantings, code-parked parking places, or open space, that you can't double-dip or use those code-required improvements and say, "Oh, I get bonus density for doing this improvement." So, we're very clear that this has to be above and beyond code minimum to get the bonus density in these areas. And there's also specific language for a binding agreement to ensure proper implementation of the proposed improvements. So, we've, in the menu approach, we've provided for a civic space option. And how we've set it up is that there's a contribution per unit rate. So, if they're seeking to do 50 additional bonus density units, there's a dollar amount based upon your adopted fish kind study for that unit cost, and they will have to provide improvements equal to that total amount. So, certain developers may choose to satisfy their improvements through one of these options, or they could do a mix-and-match and provide for several of the items we'll walk through in order to achieve the bonus densities they're looking to build. So, the first option is civic space. That is open space, that is open to the public, it's not gated or restricted. It would be an area of the project where people that are in the downtown area enjoying walking around and visiting the different park areas could also enjoy space within these developments. So, you certainly have examples in downtown within your parks. Here are some examples of open space areas within private developments. We've got a community garden concept, fountain space, seating, planting areas, et cetera. And they would identify the cost of these open space areas in terms of the land and in terms of these improvements to justify their bonus density rate. We also included in the menu the public art contribution, either contributing to the city's public art fund, or constructing a piece of public art within their site that, again, would be accessible to the public. And so, you have great examples of that, obviously, in downtown, and this would look to just continue what you've already started with your public art. And this is similar to also what's being done in Fort Myers for their public art contribution. Something very important, that if a project is adjacent to the Imperial River or any of the tributaries, we are looking to require public access to the river where those projects directly abut those water bodies, and provide that public open space where they are seeking the bonus density. So, if they want the increased density, then we're looking to have those spaces provided for within the developments, properties such as the Bamboo Parcel, make sure that they continue to be accessible by the public. And you have included your rendering of how that Bamboo Parcel may be developed in the future. We've got the Barron Park and LaBelle, other waterfront areas where there's seating, dining areas, et cetera, to really enhance the downtown. We've also provided an option for enhanced building perimeter plantings, green roofs. This probably would not be something that would be done to meet the entire bonus density requirements, but something that could be done to help reach that dollar amount required. So, we have examples in town of green roofs and additional plantings that can be done along the fronts of buildings to enhance the view from the streets, and also help meet the cost requirements. We've included green building certifications. This is something that Jennifer Hagan has brought forward in some recent LDC amendments, and would look at a way of allowing for bonus density in the downtown. These can be quite expensive to go through the process of certifying, as well as installing the green infrastructure. So, it could be a way for someone seeking higher levels of bonus density to meet those requirements, and also have an energy-efficient building. And there's just an example of one of the lead silver-certified buildings within southwest Florida. And then we have a catch-all, because we know that we're not going to think of every single improvement that may be appropriate on each parcel in the downtown area seeking bonus density. So, we've implemented a catch-all where developers can work with staff in the city manager's office, based upon their specific project and development opportunities, to achieve another design enhancement to meet the intent of the code. So, that really summarizes the changes we're proposing. We're taking this to your local planning agency next Thursday, and we are scheduled for second reading on the 20th. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, do you have any questions before we go to the public hearing? Yes, Bill?
How tall are the buildings going to be?
This will not increase your building height currently adopted in the code, which I believe is 52 feet. There's an irregular measurement, but this will not impact in any way the maximum height of buildings in downtown or anywhere.
Will the people that buy in these places have elevators?
They will have to meet Florida Building Code requirements if elevator is warranted.
But they're going to be multi-story, right? So, if there's older people that try to get upstairs and they have a physical problem, elevator should certainly be a consideration.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anyway, any other questions?
Just a quick comment. I think this is a start of where we need to go with affordable housing, period. And there's confusion and a lot of fear sometimes when you say affordable housing, but what we're really talking about is housing for professionals, our firefighters, public servants, law enforcement, teachers, so that we have an opportunity for them to live where they work. And it's a start, but we don't have a rigorous enough or broad enough plan yet to be able to talk about affordable housing. But we need to get that up on the dais and start to talk about that as well. So, thank you. Thanks for opening it up.
Okay. Maybe it'd be best, before we go to the public hearing section today, for maybe you or maybe someone else, to give an explanation as to why. Why would we want to do something like this in a city? This is a rhetorical question, and I see somebody standing up here. It's a rhetorical question, but I think it's an important one, because people, I think people need to know why we need to encourage increased density within our city. Hi.
Hi. For the record, Jay Sweet, Community Development. I'm going to put it in probably the simplest term, and that is, we've done, we're doing a lot of improvements downtown. And there's two things that are very important downtown, drainage, and people in the streets, walking, going to the restaurants, going to the shops. You need the population base to encourage the businesses. The more businesses it has, the better the population base will be. One of the things that staff has been concerned about in this concept, rather than just receiving dollars to get additional density, is doing things like adding to the ledger sheet of our drainage, so that developers would have other options to make improvements to the city, so then the city wouldn't have to acquire the land to make those improvements, but would receive the benefit from it, and in exchange for that, they would be able to have their bonus density. Nobody's talking about making buildings taller or anything like that. If somebody builds a two-story building, they don't have to have an elevator. If they build a five-story building, they'd have to have an elevator, whatever the building code requires. The big thing is, is that I think we're really anxious to make sure that we get the river access, that the public in general has its amenities, and that we get the additional drainage features that we need. This is a way that encourages that, and it encourages developers in such a way that they can benefit from it by making the city better.
And we all, some of us went, I think a lot of us went to this thing in Fort Myers that explained why these things were important, and why a functioning, walkable community takes people. I mean, it's kind of a self-reinforcing thing, for transit to work, for you to be able to walk someplace, there's got to be a lot of people there, because these businesses need to support them. So, I think that's the thing we need to go ahead and keep stressing to people, not the fear of that, like Steve said. The other thing is, is that we're not talking about, when people think increased density, they think, "Oh, my gosh, they're going to make Miami Beach out of it." We're not talking about that kind of density. Explain to everybody just a little bit about what that kind of density is compared to what kind of density we're talking about.
Now, we're not talking about Manhattan at 500 units per acre.
There you go.
We're not talking about Miami at 80 units to 120 units per acre. You know, we have a general density downtown, depending upon a variety of factors, in mixed use, that is somewhere, it can be 10, 15, possibly 20 units per acre with these bonuses. You're not talking a huge increase, but you're talking basically, a developer can get about a 25% increase in what the allowable density is, but he has to do it within the confines. And the question arises, when you do that, do you do the bonus density program, which we have on the books, where they come in, they show us what they pay for land, if there's a calculation, they write a check? Or do we do it in such a way that encourages them to make substantial improvements above and beyond, make the development better, make the walkability better, make the public infrastructure better, in order to get that, so it's a win-win-win? We get a win twice, they win once, we win twice. And I think that's the approach that we're thinking of.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions for today before we go to public hearing? Jay, thank you very much. Stick around, I'm sure you will. This time, we'll go to a public hearing on this item, and this item alone. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please come forward. Bill, could you put the lights up, please?
Good evening. Christine Ross from the Benita Springs Area Chamber of Commerce. I just want to tell you how excited I am to hear you talking about this. One of the things that we did almost two years ago now, when we were reviewing the plans for old 41 redevelopment, is we brought a focus group of young professionals together to talk to potential developers and the city staff. And one of the things that they really liked was the thought that they could eventually be down in the redevelopment area. They like the way that it's mixed and kind of funky, and the bike shop, and the fishing and the kayaking. And so, I think you're going in the right direction. The workforce information that we're getting is that these young professionals are having a terribly difficult time finding a place to live. We have started a workforce housing task force at the chamber, and for the Economic Development Council to try to address this. So, for you to be taking these steps to create that density, the thing that I remember most about the presentation at the Harbor Side last October, was all the developers that were talking about creating walkable communities said, "If you don't create the density and bring the people there at the beginning, you will never have your retail. So, don't build your retail first, make the residential density happen first." So don't build your retail first, make the residential density happen first, and then the retail will flourish. So I'm sure that Mike would like to have more folks walking around and that the kayaks would as well. And the young professionals that we've talked to want to be in an environment like this Old 41 area. They specifically express the desire not to be on Fifth Avenue or in a gated community because that's not where they are in their lives. So I applaud you, and I hope you will make this as strong as you can for the future of the downtown.
Thanks, Christine. Anyone else this time on this particular matter?
Fred Forbes for the record. I applaud what's going on here with one respect, and that is you have an opportunity to get elevators as part of the credit. And let me tell you, walking up three stories or four stories is not a piece of cake even for the young guys, other than firefighters, and they're in real good shape. But, I mean, people carrying up groceries, moving. The other thing it does, it offers an opportunity to have a few more units in these developments that are ADA handicap accessible. There is no reason, even though the building code does not require an elevator until a fifth, five-story building. You can require that. That should be part of this bonus because that is important. You can always put in a little landscaping, those other things, but elevators after the fact, after it's built, it's much more expensive, and it will help sell those, the tenants and all that on going in those buildings. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward?
Hi, Deborah McLean, publisher of the Banana Peel. I concur that anything over two stories needs an elevator. In fact, in Naples, they have elevators in two-story buildings. And the reason is justified. The average age of the wealthy retiree coming to Benita Springs is 75. I don't think that they're not going to buy affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Okay. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Would you like to send this on?
Move it ahead.
Move it to second reading?
Second.
And we have motion in a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longcart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Sackton?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Okay. And Audrey, I think it was already the city's attorney's report, kind of like that, but do you got anything else for us?
I do, and it's just one item. It's a scheduling issue that I have with you. I provided you with a memorandum on Monday. First of all, Happy New Years.
Happy New Year.
Thank you. And we have several cases coming up. And because of Martin Luther King Day, because of President's Day, our zoning has been merged, per counsel's direction, to your Wednesday meeting instead of your normal Monday meeting because we don't have those Mondays open. Because of that, I wanted to make sure we understood where on the agenda we should place this. The cases are very important. They take a lot of energy. And I refer to them as land use matters because it's not just zoning. We have some comprehensive plan issues that go side by side with the zoning, along with a Fludra hearing. So with that being said, you have two morning meetings and you have one evening meeting. Starting the meeting at 5:30, I did not know whether you would want for your hearings to be held earlier or held on the agenda during the public hearing portion or be held at the last thing after you've finished all your other business. And that's the reason for this request. You pretty much have three options for each of the meeting. I did put your information there in the second box in the memo when we thought it was best to be held. You could either hold things at the regular portion or certainly in the morning meeting, hold it, say, at 11 o'clock. You probably don't want to go to 1 o'clock because, you know, if you can get out before lunch, that's probably better. On February 3rd, you probably want to handle either at a specific time or start the meeting potentially early as the Pelican Bay, the Pelican Bay case. The Car Dome case, I was asked by Bob Pritt. He has another city council meeting, different city council, earlier in the day. So he would appreciate if we could keep that on our 5:30 agenda or sometime after the 5:30 is started during the public hearing portion, if that's possible. Counsel, it's your pleasure. Let me know. The final thing is, how do I go about doing this? All right. So we have some comprehensive plan amendments other than the Pelican Bay one. And counsel, you will be changing in March. There'll be a different composition. I will tell you that it tends to sometimes be messy when there's a new council, when one group has transmitted and another group. It's a policy call, you can still go forward, but sometimes it's better to have the transmittal just for fluidity, be at the same time as the actual enacting entity so everybody agrees on pretty much what they're transmitting. Likewise, we have a member of the LPA who is running for office, and it might not be, you know, it's a policy issue, too, if you have somebody on the LPA then changing over and voting. And we've had that issue happen in the past, then having them vote as a council member because of the timing change. So you may want to postpone some hearings, and that includes Benita, I believe Benita Village is the one that is, has an application pending that is ready. Now, the developer may wish to postpone it also, but at this time, that's one that, whether you wish to do that anyway so that the new council gets the fresh start on that case. Counsel?
Well, I'll start out there. January 20th is the morning meeting, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And then the February 3rd is the evening meeting, right?
Uh-huh.
And then the 17th, back to a morning meeting, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Just want to get that clear for everybody. I quite frankly, I don't really care one way or the other, but I've got to tell you, the earlier you get to these, the fresher your brain's going to be. I'm not so much worried about the morning meeting, but that evening meeting there, the earlier we can get to those, I think the better off the council's going to be.
Would you like that to start? And we had some public at the Pelican Bay. Now, the comprehensive plan, anybody can come in and speak. It's legislative in nature, it's not a cross-
Explain to them which one the comprehensive plan is.
Okay. So I put Raptor Bay as the abbreviation, and I put Pelican Bay, and it's Pelican Landing, so excuse me there, I'm outside my jurisdiction. Pelican Landing, this is the property very close to the Hyatt. It's currently Raptor Bay, and I think that's where I got the bay part stuck in my brain. That's the golf course. They are, they annexed into the city. They are requested-
The DRI amendment is the comprehensive plan, right?
No.
No?
No.
Then you don't, it's not on here on this list?
The DRI amendment is the number two on the list.
Mm-hmm.
So I treat that as the zoning.
Okay.
And the zoning, we had the hearing, it's closed. Whoever is a participant may continue to be a participant.
Okay, but it's got to be in this order, is what I'm saying.
That's correct. I would suggest you go comp plan first and then the zoning afterwards.
Right, thank you.
And then we do have a DRI development order change, but because it is considered an NOPC, Notice of Proposed Change, it's an E2, which is 380.06 subsection 17 E2. Yeah, you don't want the whole statute, it'll drive you nuts. Because there is some changes, that is something that normally can be handled at a council meeting, at a regular meeting, normal stuff, assuming everything else goes forward. If the comprehensive plan doesn't go forward, then the zoning doesn't go forward at that point because you can only zone what is consistent with your comp plan.
Okay. Counsel, I would recommend on February 3rd for that one, just starting there, so we've got to start someplace, that we have that time certain, whether it's 6:00 or 6:30. I really don't care as early as staff feels comfortable.
Do you want to do it before your meeting, like, say, 3:00 PM? And that way, if you have a lot of public people, it's certainly the comprehensive plan, which is open to everybody.
Counsel, are you all available on that date earlier?
I'm better at 5:30, but-
5:30?
Me, too, but-
Your call, counsel.
And didn't you say that Bob Pritt needed 5:30?
That's for the third case.
But-
He does.
Won't all three go in an order, or?
Your call. And we can-
Maybe we want to start and stop the meeting, you know, three times?
You would go into your regular agenda and-
Bob meant that it needed to be 5:30 or later.
Yeah.
Correct.
Correct, okay. So we could start that in this order at 5:30 if you want to. We can start, we can have these at 5:30 and then start the council meeting after these, is what we can do.
Absolutely.
Now, do we have to advertise the time of the meeting, the actual regular meeting? Does that need to be strictly observed?
We would have it set up, it's a normal 5:30, and the meeting will-
We would just change the order of the agenda? Okay.
Right, and we just will make sure the public communications will probably crawl, you'll make sure people know so if they're not interested.
So counsel, are you okay with starting the meeting at 5:30 and have these timed certain, start these after we have Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation come right into this? Is that okay?
Sure.
And then we'll take care of our regular business after that. And do all three, right? Okay? Good. Got it?
Got it.
Good. Okay. January 20th, Oak Creek Preserve and the Benita Exchange, that's a morning meeting. Do you want to do the same thing for that?
Yep.
Just start those right at 9:00?
Yes.
Okay? Followed by the regular meeting?
Yeah, that'll be okay.
And then the same thing with the other two?
Okay. Now, the final question is the comp plan on Benita Village. The others are not, I believe they meant sufficiency yet. So it's really a council preference unless the, has there been-
Well, the Benita Village isn't on here. You were just talking about it.
It's the last paragraph.
Benita Village is a, for the record, Jacqueline Genson, Benita Village is a pending comprehensive plan amendment and a zoning case, so they're being tracked concurrently. What will happen is, is they'll go to an LPA meeting, and then they'll be set for a city council transmittal of, I believe it's the 14th or 15th, which is the day before elections. And because the comprehensive plan amendment is an expeditive review process, it goes to the state for a 30-day comment period after we transmit it, and then adoption would be scheduled thereafter. And at that time, we will have a different council. So the question becomes, is council going to want to do a city-initiated continuance on that matter because we'll have two different councils?
So how is the Benita Village, are they all right with that? I mean, no?
Yeah, I would say up to the developer.
Yeah, that's a no.
That's how I would feel.
Yeah. I don't know. My preference would be to go ahead and get it started, but-
Schedule them, and they'll know there's a risk that they could either. They can also continue it as well.
Well, that's going to be up to the next council. If it gets too much for their brain at that time, they can just punt and just roll it down the road for a little bit until they get to where they can understand it or not. So are you okay with scheduling it? When would you propose to schedule that? What date?
Just wondering.
We would schedule it, it's the, well, they're also going to be going to a February zoning board date, and then it would be a city council adoption on the zoning. But the zoning is predicated on the land use amendment being adopted, and that's where we get into that gray area because statute allows the city to concurrently process, and we can approve the zoning contingent on that land use being approved, but it would be approved by a different council. And that's where staff is concerned that the adoption hearing for the land use would be heard by a different council and-
What do you want to do?
I prefer the same council go ahead and-
Okay, let's do that. What do you think, guys? You all agree with that?
Yep.
Good, let's do that.
Good call.
See how easy that was? Just tell us what you want. It's okay, it'll get done, right?
Well, is that what the developer, Benita Village would like to do?
That's not currently what the applicant wants, but I will coordinate with the applicant's agent on that matter.
Yeah, it's, it kind of is what it is, right, at this point? Is everyone all right with that?
Yes, sir.
Do you need, you don't need a motion in a second? That's okay? We good?
So if the developer wants to do the split council, that's fine? Or what are we doing here?
I think we're postponing the zoning till after transmittal, or are we going to?
Yeah, let me, I'll coordinate with Ms. Montgomery.
And wait for the new, wait for the new council.
Right.
So bringing it back to us?
We have spoken with her, she just needed to get back with her client on it.
If there's something, there's another reason they need to go ahead and do this, well, I'm sure that council will reconsider that and schedule it or something. Does that be all right?
Yeah, it's good.
Yeah, because I'm sympathetic to a time schedule that's dire. But they have to be careful what they ask for, too, I got to tell you. All right? Okay, is that all right? Good? Good. Audrey, what else you got for us?
That's it, sir. Thank you.
Okay, very much. Let's see, we are to city managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, I've just got three items here briefly. John, you've got something as well, and John's got one item as well. Busy month ahead. I just wanted to let you know that the last year workshop is scheduled for January 13th at 5:30 PM in the council chambers here. So we want to invite the public to that opportunity to provide input into that process on our comprehensive plan. Secondly, also, the last week this month begins the Benita Beach visioning process. A consultant will be in for that entire week, actually Monday through Thursday, and we'll also do the same thing back in February, late February. But we will provide you more information on that, and we'll be reaching out not only to the public, but also specifically to certain stakeholder groups that have been identified in the city to be invited in and have their thoughts about the Benita Beach Road. Stakeholders do include Collier County as well as Lee County since they're both involved in this process because of their ownership of certain portions of the road. And then last I've got is, as you'll recall, Councilmember McIntosh brought forward back in February, a proposal for Hometown Heroes Program. And the committee met, and the council voted specifically that the committee would not meet in the sunshine because they would not be making recommendations to the council. The committee met, and they were concerned about the timing of starting right away, like back in February or March of last year. And they, because they would be providing awards by the time they got done with the process, very close to Citizen of the Year process. And so they didn't want those confused or too close. So the process for the first round of Hometown Heroes selection is beginning now. We have it up on our website, and there is a nomination form for that purpose. And they are looking for individuals who consistently demonstrate excellent community leadership by stepping up to the plate, individuals who have made a significant contribution to the community through his or her involvement by giving many hours of personal time, has made a significant contribution towards the welfare of the community, has not been previously named Citizen of the Year, has resided in the city of Benita Springs for a minimum of 10 years, and has not self-nominated. In other words, somebody else has to nominate you. So bottom line is, is that the outreach for this has begun, and we've got it up on BTV. We have it out on our social media already, we have it up on our website. We're also going to be sending out immediately press releases to all the various press and media contacts we have, as well as emailing to a significant list of people that we have. So the outreach has started. For those people who believe that they know an individual, a resident of the city of Benita Springs, who meets this criteria, we're certainly looking forward to nominations from those. So the committee has a good number of people to select from. And Councilwoman McIntosh, I didn't know if there was anything else you'd like to add?
No, that covered it well. I think there are a number, sorry?
What?
I think there are a number of people who contribute to the city, have been in the background and clearly need to be recognized in this, this is an opportunity to do that, especially with the recognition from the citizens themselves. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve.
Very good. With no questions, I'll turn it over to John.
John?
I just wanted to give counsel an update. We have some great partners over at the county staff in different departments. The ones I'm thinking of tonight are with Solid Waste. They brought to our attention early this afternoon that there's been some issues with advanced disposal, they're having some equipment issues. So you may, the issues actually developed yesterday, carried over till today, and will most likely carry over till tomorrow. So I just wanted to give you a heads up. If you do get any complaints from residents about the disposal picks up from advanced disposal, county staff is aware of it, they're already working out the logistics to get their problem resolved. If you do get calls or inquiries from people, refer them to me if you don't mind, and we'll work with our county staff partners to make sure that the particular issues get addressed. But it is something that's going to affect pickups throughout the city because obviously Advance has responsibilities throughout the city. And unfortunately, it's not something that they could have resolved right away, although they are working on it. So just wanted to give you a heads up. If you hear from any of your folks, please pass them along, tell them we're on it.
John, John, has that happened today?
It actually started yesterday. It's equipment with their trucks.
Okay. Because I know we had our pickup today, recycling and everything.
Yeah, and it depends on where the particular trucks were allocated. So some areas of the city was okay, some not so much. And unfortunately, we do expect it to bleed over for the next day or two.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Good. Thank you very much. We are to mayor and councilmember items and reports and I guess we'll go ahead and go to, the first one's going to be the, let's see, I guess we'll do the zoning board of adjustments. Everyone, you have a piece of paper there. You sign your name or put your name at the top there so we can read it there. And Audrey, we're going to choose three and only three. Is that correct?
For zoning board, yes.
Exit, check, whatever you want to put right there.
Right. We're not doing it ranked.
Funny little face, whatever, whatever you want to do. Does everybody want to fill that out and you put them up on top here and Debbie or Audrey can come and get them?
Also make sure your name is on it so if anybody wants to inspect this, we're able to show who it is.
Yeah. Never hurts to say it twice. Okay?
You want both now or?
Not just the one.
Which one?
Just the zoning.
Just the zoning one. Zoning. And then while she is tallying the votes there, if you want to go ahead and put your name on your other one for the local planning agency, and you're going to choose two on that one. Choose two. Put them up on the top there. And our other lovely assistant. Oh. And while we're waiting, Dr. Steve, do you have anything in mayor and councilman writing?
I do. Thank you very much. Happy New Year, everyone. But two things for sure. The city of Benita Springs, when it was first unincorporated but brought in as an unincorporated city and then made a city, was used the fire district, which gave us an odd set of postal addresses. For example, some of the people who are now in Astero have Benita Springs addresses. Some of the people in Benita Springs had Astero addresses, vice versa. But one of the oddest ones is at the tip of Benita Springs, just before the overpass, we have a group of folks who live on, near Lover's Key with Fort Myers Beach addresses. So we now know that the US Postal Service is willing to make an effort to allow people to have the city addresses in which they live, even though the ZIP code may stay the same. I'd like to ask staff to investigate how we can get the people up on the Lover's Key piece, those condos into the, with the mailing addresses of the city of Benita Springs. And apparently, the little bit of research I've done, the folks in Tampa are willing to talk about that. So. Secondly, it comes to, it comes as a shock sometimes to recognize that our, our public servants, our firefighters and our law enforcement officers are human and, and frail. And when we lost Captain Phillips a few weeks ago, it made it all the more clear that we need to recognize and, and appreciate the firefighters, the law enforcement officers, EMS folks who daily put their lives on the line in many respects. But I've said it time and again, we couldn't be the city we are, we couldn't have the quality life we have without the Lee County Sheriff's Department, the Benita Springs Fire and Rescue District and our EMS servants. So please recognize, thank them when you see them and stay safe, folks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bill, do you have anything?
Sure.
What you got for me?
I'd like to wish, not wish, but for all of you, a healthy and prosperous New Year and a safe New Year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Janet, what do you have for us today?
Da-da-da. Da-da-da. The Benita Astero Magazine and they talked about places to go out and enjoy the great outdoors and Cullums Trail is on there and kayaking in Imperial River. So awesome. And those places are a great time, it is a great time now with the weather change to get out there and actually be healthy and do some walking outside. So awesome.
Okay. Good. Mike, how about you? Hold on.
Zoning board, Roger...
When I go like this and I say, hold on, and I'm looking at you, that meant you, but go ahead. Audrey, what do you got for us?
I have done the tabulation for zoning board. I'm sorry. Roger Brunswick, Richard Donnelly and Stephen Kissinger are the three top five.
Okay. So that's the zoning board. Okay.
If you can make a motion to that effect.
Is there a motion to, is there a motion to effect? Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion of second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slakda?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Okay. Did you prepare the other one yet?
Henry Byrd and Sam Vincent.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second by Bill. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slakda?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. And Mike, what do you got for us? Nothing? You're good? Good. Stephen?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Just a reminder, next Friday at 6:00 PM, the Wounded Warrior's Amputee Softball Game will be playing the fire and rescue team at 6:00 and then the Lee County, our Community Policing Unit at 8:00 PM. I do want to thank Mary, is she still here? Mary back there? Yeah. Mary, thank you. This is the second year in a row that Benita Springs Utilities have provided the water, Gatorade and the small towels because in between games, they, they have to take their prostheses off and, and clean them up. So thank you BSU so much for that.
Thank you very much. And Pete, what do you got for us?
Certainly, Dr. Steve said it very well, but Captain Phillips, it just makes everybody realize how precious life is, how precious memories are with family. There was an amazing outpouring of love and support there from so many people across our community. I saw several of you there and, and several others not in this room. Just God bless he and his family. You just, I guess you say, you never know, but God rest his soul and he did have such deep faith. Obviously, I was not aware of that ahead of the service, but the deep faith that he has, I am positive he is in a better place right now. Dr. Steve, ultimately another good point about the ZIP codes. And interestingly enough, congratulations to Astero who just went through that, been helping them a little bit getting with, involved. They would actually have, some of their addresses were Benita Springs, some of their addresses were Fort Myers and I don't believe there are any other incorporated, but the ZIP code will stay the same, but now the village of Astero will have an Astero mailing address if you live within Astero. And that was very, very important to Mayor Nick Bados and several others. So good work there. Continuing to, and I don't know what, who else has had conversations on the high school, but I did learn slightly before Christmas that the site on Imperial Parkway is now back on the table. The arrangement that had been worked out there did not work out for the purchase of that property. So that is another site that is back on the table, is my understanding. I shared this with Carl. Actually, interestingly enough, ran into the person that owns that parcel of land. So that's exactly where I found that out and have reached out to the school board, but obviously they're well aware of it. So open, transparent, let's bring, let's get this high school site selected. Let's make it the right one and looking forward to that. And Steve, thanks for mentioning the Wounded Warrior softball game and I certainly hope we can have a good turnout there and show them a good Benita Springs welcome. And happy 2016 to everybody.
Okay. I think I sent, all of you or Carl sent a copy, a copy of email, but I wanted to let everybody know that for the first time, the governors, the governor of the state of Florida, not only this governor, but our, whoever's governor, always has a baseball banquet to celebrate the start of the, the season here and not that I know anything about baseball. I know what a baseball is. That's about it. And, but, and for the first time ever, they're having it in southwest Florida. Guess where? Benita Springs. The Hyatt Coconut Point, Benita Springs. So yes, that's cool. You may applaud. Or not. I thought it was pretty cool. So yay, all it takes is 100 bucks and you can get in. So, except for Mike, it'll be 200 bucks for you, pal. I don't know. Anyway, that's all I have for the day and anyone want to approve the minutes?
Approve the minutes.
We have motion in numerous seconds. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slakda?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
And we are to public comment once more. Anyone wishing to talk, speak on any city item, please come forward.
Yes, Alex Grant, 11-851 East Terry Street. As you're probably aware, I'm a member of the National Association Railroad Passengers and the last issue, this was December, they, they had the article about the House and